All right, we're going to call to order the June 18th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by Charlene Hamilton.
The council did meet in closed session this evening to converge with our real property negotiator regarding negotiations with Caltrans regarding the Tower Bridge, our state highway, formerly just state highway 275, or the last remnant of the highway 275. So we're going to proceed now to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, we're prohibited by state law from having a discussion or taking action on items that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address this or any other item on the agenda this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards at the front door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure everybody gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited in no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that chart simply indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. Also, for some folks, speaking in public can present some anxiety, and so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls, or even any applause or other kinds of demonstrations, and that we maintain a civil discourse in the chambers. We take the request cards for speaking up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular item. So if you're intending to speak on an item, please be sure before the council discussion or the questions or the public testimony is begun to get the card into the city clerk. Actually, before we proceed to 1A, we have a request from the city clerk to add an item to tonight's agenda, which is consideration of Resolution 14-40 calling an election and requesting the Board of Supervisors to permit the county clerk to render specified services to the city relating to the conduct of a municipal election on November 4th, 2014. And I'm going to turn to the clerk to describe the tests that we need to meet under the brown acc for the need to take immediate action, and that this came to the attention of the city after the posting of the agenda. Those are the two key standards, and so if you can describe how those are satisfied.
Yes, that's correct. There needs to be a need for the council to take immediate action, and the matter needed to have arisen after the posting of the agenda, and both of those standards have been met.
Can you just describe how, in what ways they've been, they're satisfied?
Well, we learned today from the Yolo County Elections Department that the resolutions requesting consolidation of election services needs to be delivered to the Elections Department by July 7th, and since you are not meeting again until July 16th, we needed to have the action taken tonight.
All right, are there any questions on the request to add this to tonight's agenda? And I know the request was to add it to consent, but because it hasn't been posted, it's not really appropriate to be on the consent agenda, so we'd be adding it as item 20, 22B, or I guess 22.5 to our agenda. So is there any discussion of that? Is there a motion? It will require a two-thirds vote. It's been moved by Mr. Ledesma and seconded by Mayor Protem Johansson. Why don't we take a roll call vote?
Thank you. Councilmember Sandin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kristoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Johansson? And Mayor Cabaldin?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that motion carries 5-0. All right, so now to item 1A, and we have no requests to speak on that item, so we're going to proceed to item 1B, which is Council of Communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mayor Protem Johansson?
Yeah, the Air Quality Management District met on June 10th, and we discussed the allocation of clean air fund projects that are distributed between Yolo and Solano County. For those who may wonder, these funds come from a $4 per vehicle surcharge and also AB-8 funding, which is property tax. Now, Yolo County hasn't participated in that, Solano County has. So there was about, it looks like about 63,000 went to projects in Yolo County and 442,000 went to Solano County, but really the difference was the property tax allocation. We also went through the budget for the year, it's a balanced budget. We have cost recovery of roughly 88 percent, and that's it.
Mr. Johansson, Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, very briefly, Mayor Regional Sand, we met June 11th, and we did approve an agreement with Brown and Caldwell and HDR Engineering to provide management services for the Echo Water Project. The Echo Project is Regional Sand's upgrades on the sewer treatment facility. It's a $2 billion project, and this particular agreement is worth about $85 million, so it's not small change, but it's a step in the right direction.
Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. I have a couple of meetings to provide updates to the council on. First of all, back on the 9th of June, a week ago Monday, was a meeting of the Yolo County Transportation District. We took up a few items. First of all, we went ahead and passed the preliminary budget for 2014-15, and there were some changes to that budget which allowed, which will save our city's contribution to the district some money. I don't have that exact figure in front of me, but because of some, the district reviewed some of the requests from Davis to look at some expenses, we were able to reduce some of the contributions, and that was some good news. Also, we took up a deliberation of the proposed draft county-wide transportation capital improvement plan. Recall, there was some discussion brought up by the county about the need for a capital improvement plan for the county, and whether the Yolo Transportation District would be, should be responsible for that and what that would mean. There was some good discussion about that. Where we landed was very much so that the YCTD, it's within their charter to be a transportation planning group. However, because of limited staff, they have some vacant, we have some vacant positions that we said, we instructed, directed the staff to fill those vacant positions to be able to further that cause, and then to be able, it made sense to do it on a limited basis. That is, we should just maybe take inventory of proposed capital improvement projects that are from within the county or from other, the member agencies within YCTD, and we agreed to go that far. Any other discussion, obviously, we need to come back about any proposed funding for those projects and prioritization process for those projects. We need much more deliberation by the member agencies, the cities, including ours. So we went ahead and directed the staff to move forward on that. We were in agreement that we should have an inventory of what exactly we're talking about, where there are some needs. So that's where we landed on that one particular issue. We also got an update, as you're aware, that there were some obstacles in the way of the, from challenges for Yolo Bus around, moving of routes around the arena in Sacramento because of the construction projects. The good news and the short story is, is we developed a good working plan with regional transit to establish, to actually go out and look at, which they did, look at the routes, make sure there were some ample turning radiuses, and we actually got two stops now, and Mike looking, we actually got two stops and possibility I heard today of another stop along Fifth Street. So we made great progress in that realm to make sure the routes downtown serving, which is the largest bulk share of Yolo Bus's ridership coming from downtown back into Davis and West Sacramento and Woodland. Those stops service over, I think I want to say 1,400 to 1,600 riders, that we were able to accommodate that. In addition, YCTD is also providing regional transit in the city of Sacramento. Some of there, we had some extra shelters. So rather than having them go into temporary shelterless bus stops, we were able to provide shelters there until the regional transit can find funding for more permanent ones. So I think we had some good working plans for that, so thanks to our city staff, who I know got involved and helped work with the city of Sacramento and regional transit, and kind of brokered that deal, so it worked, turned out great. So those are three things I had coming from Yolo Transit District. On this past Monday, on the 16th, was a meeting of the Yolo Natural Heritage Program, everyone's favorite JPA that they lead me on. But they get, by the meeting, we also passed a budget. The JPA is in good financial condition and is in fact now using its budgeting process to start to project forward on what would be our implementation of a permitted plan. That's a big step for us, that we started to look at what the organization will need once we do get the permits, once we do get past all the planning project and actually have a JPA to actually implement it, and that's a big step. A couple of the things that came out of that meeting as well was notification that we had went and passed by a couple of agencies, most notably UC Davis, to see if they were interested in joining the JPA. Again, that would have helped with some of their covered activities as well, some costs, but they chose not to, which is fine, they have a right to come back in at a later time, but we needed to get those in at this time. So we had a good discussion around that. The schedule, we got an update from our executive director on the schedule. We are continuing to move very quickly on this item. Changes to the plan and proposals, negotiations over it are happening at a really rapid pace, and it is taking a great deal of time to kind of make sure we go through those issues. Important policy issues that we, myself, the vice chair, and the past chair, Foreign Management Committee, have to deal with on a weekly basis now. So it is becoming a really, a really, how should I say, busy work schedule that we're working through, and staff is doing a terrific job managing it all. So I just wanted to give all you folks that update, and that's all I have for those two items.
No reports from me.
All right. Okay. I just sent one, two, I guess. The streetcar policies during committee met this morning, and Mr. Ledesma and Mayor Protem Johansson were also present, and the committee is, the project is making very solid progress, and so we briefed on essentially what's happened since the FTA accepted our request to move into the project development phase from that point forward. And so the only action from the committee was to authorize a variety of essentially technical assistance contracts to assure that we're, we stay on track with a variety of the projects. But there was, it was a very good, I thought it was a very good meeting in terms of, it's clear that the, there's a coherent gelling of the whole, of all the partners around sort of equal levels of enthusiasm about this project, and we're no longer the, you know, start pulling other folks along. I certainly got the impression the city of Sacramento elected representatives certainly were very solidly behind what we're doing, and we're looking for ways to solve challenges and bring additional resources to the table. And the business and community representatives from both sides of the room are equally engaged. The city of Sacramento is replacing a couple of their representatives with even, even more influential business representatives in order to move the project forward. So it was, I thought it was a very productive, positive meeting in terms of moving the project and keeping it on track, to open up a later part of this decade. Then also had the Secoc Transportation Meeting. We are working through the development of the next metropolitan transportation plan. I think we discussed the concept before the council that we are trying to, we have too much growth in the plan, even with the wind down of the recession, there's too much growth in the plan. I mean, too many units of all kinds in the regional plan compared to what we actually project now as being likely. And so, just as we did in the last MTP, have to turn the knobs back a little bit on how much is forecast for growth. That also has impacts on how much money is available for major projects, whether it's transit, bridges, roads, and what have you. So to, but that's sort of at the bottom line level, then that, we actually need to assign out what is, okay, what is that, how is that actually going to play out in the real world? That matters because, you know, everyone, including our committee, has stuff that's either in the general plan or that is maybe even fully entitled, but that we have no expectation is going to build anytime soon, and there are other jurisdictions who have lots of pieces of property that are in that state. And so what, a major task of the planning process for the MTP, in order to glean it down to a level that is actually fundable, is to try to get a better sense of the likely, of the likely phasing. It's not perfect, I mean, even the owners have no, don't really know, you know, down to, you know, the, a really fine-grained level, but we're adding lots of new elements to the analysis now to, in order to make that a more refined approach. So a few of those that we are, that we've been working on this, you know, as part of this month's work, were integrating HCPs and the NCCPs throughout the region into the process. So, you know, projects that either are in areas targeted for conservation efforts or that don't have a path towards getting the permits that they need as a result of the NCCPs for the areas falling apart or never got, haven't got off the ground, will get pushed later into the planning horizon, and therefore so will the related transportation improvements. Because what we don't want to do is, like, build an interchange to serve a new residential subdivision, and in doing so saying, okay, well, we can't pay for an interchange over there, or we can't pay for that streetcar project over there, and then find that that residential subdivision didn't get built for reasons that we might have been able to anticipate. So that's the point of it. So HCPs is one, we've seen some extensive analysis now on the floodplain issues and the implications of all the various FEMA rules and the state laws around floodplain management, the constraints related to the airports, and then the effect of water, both water availability and supply, but more to the point, water, the water distribution systems, ability to deliver water that may be legally entitled, but there's not, there's no way to get to these locations. And so those are the kinds of factors that we're really diving deep into to try and understand how we might be able to make the smartest MTP that we've done to this point. There actually was a fair amount of conversation about why we haven't regionalized our HCP planning a little bit more to try to exercise more leverage, to achieve some economies of scale, is not the right word necessarily, given how close to bankruptcy so many of the HCPs have been, but in order to achieve some economies and to have a little additional leverage with the permitting agencies, but that's an item for the, for Mr. Ledesma's JPA to grapple with, so.
Thank you.
All right, item 1C is appointments boards and commissions. We don't have any of those this evening, so that's going to bring us to the consent agenda, which is items 2 through 18 tonight. The city managers requested that we remove item 12 from tonight's agenda altogether and continue it to a future date. If there's no objection, that'll be the order, so then that leaves all the other items between item 2 and item 18. Are there any items to, let me ask first, are there any items to just remove altogether from the consent agenda? All right, then there, are there items for separate question or comment?
Five and 15.
Ken, please.
Let's see, let's see, those, four and 13 and 16. Okay, so the first up is item four, which is consideration of a waiver to the city's investment policy to allow investments in a local community financial institution, Community Business Bank of West Sacramento. So Paul, is this a, this is a permanent waiver that's being requested?
Yes, the investment policy says that wherever we go to a local banking institution that hasn't been vetted through our prequalification process, before we make the investment, we first come and we seek prior approval from the city council.
But this waiver would be, would be evergreen, right? I mean, you could still do this, these transactions you could still do in 15 years from now, you wouldn't need any additional authorization from the council?
Well, that's correct, that's your point. We have an intent that the investment that we're going to make now would be about 1.25 million, and if the council would prefer, the waiver could be just for that investment amount and not more, so that it's not an open-ended waiver where we could just, let's say, continue to invest funds in this institution, but it would be limited to that 1.25 million amount.
Yeah, I don't know if it's this amount, or, I mean, I've, Mr. Kristoff, and I've been here long enough to remember when local government started to approve waivers for derivatives and a variety of other instruments, and in many cases did not ask the right questions and didn't have sunsets, didn't have reports back, and I would like to have that, since this is both, it's not really the institution that's new so much as it's this instrument, and this institution is our best option for achieving that instrument, but I'd like to be sure that we, you know, that maybe, whether it's this investment or we put a time limit on it with a, with a report back about, you know, about how it actually worked, so that we can, so we can make a better informed long-term decision.
Mayor, if I could suggest, we come to you now with quarterly investment policy reports, and what we would do is we would, we could continue to provide a report on how the SEDARS are doing, how this investment is doing, in that agenda report we're bringing to you quarterly.
With the waiver contention on that, so what I worry about is those reports, like our budget documents, you know, are like this, and I mean, there's only, there's only so much attention anyone, any one of us can spend on to identify those emerging issues, whereas when there is a, some sort of conditional approval, you know, we have to pay attention to it again. And I, and I think that's, it's important that we do so, that we give you the flexibility in this case to, you know, to use this tool, but that we ultimately make a, you know, an informed, longer-term decision at some point. So maybe if we gave you this authority for it sometime, maybe a quarter, you could do the investments that you have now and any others that fit in that time, and then in the next quarterly report, if that included, you know, a report back with a, you know, proposal whether to make it a permanent waiver or not, or, you know, some, I mean, I'm not fixed on the timeframe, but, you know, something, something less than 20 years, maybe a quarter's too short, but.
Or this upcoming, the end of this upcoming fiscal year?
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Does that make sense to the council? Okay. All right, so essentially a one-year, a fiscal year, a one-year pilot with a report back that would include whether or not to recommend a recommendation, whether or not to make it a permanent waiver at that stage.
Paul, it seems like this bank is located in Lodi?
No, they're domiciled here in West Sacramento, they have another branch, their other branch is located in Lodi.
Okay, there are other branches. And is this bank large enough so that your comfort level is raised, that, you know, things will move smoothly?
Yeah, you know, cautious to say, we haven't, we haven't vetted the bank as we have the other kind of prequalified investment institutions that we work with, but they are capitalized substantially. We feel comfortable with the FDIC insurance, that the negotiable CDs that we would be invested in would be protected with the full faith of the US government, full faith.
So there's going to be multiple issuances in the form of 250,000?
We're talking about two investments. So this SEDARS program is a program in which basically a community business bank is able to purchase numerous CDs issued by banks around the country, and they would hold those CDs for us rather than having us go out and purchase in 250,000 increments from these banks all over the country. So it becomes a way that you can, you can invest in negotiable CDs in larger amounts, and SEDARS can be purchased in million-dollar increments. So when we were thinking about purchasing SEDARS for our portfolio, we looked and we saw that we had a local community bank that participated in the program, and it seemed logical to go to them to, to purchase the investment. Now, I should say, there's another investment that we're talking about, a $250,000 negotiable CD that's actually issued by Community Business Bank. In all cases, we have full FDIC coverage by all these investments. Investments in SEDARS are allowed by the California Treasurer's Office, they have a policy on it, it's in the state policy, and it's covered by our local city adopted investment policy.
Thank you. Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. And you're, and I'm supportive of moving, using the only local bank we have in town as a vehicle for this one particular program, but what might be helpful going forward as we look at local, using local institutions, is that there was, was there any RFP for this particular service, or did we choose it? And what was the criteria outside? It was local that we chose it. That's, that's a little unclear, and I think that's something that I would, I'd like to see addressed going forward, because it's just, you know, moving without much check and balance in terms of who that body is, who's on the board, and all those sorts of issues could be raised.
We can certainly get back to you with more information about the bank that we're going through, but let me just say this, is we did do an RFP process to select four broker-dealer firms who we would channel our investments through. What we discovered when we tried to go through our prequalified broker-dealers to purchase SEDARS is they are not an investment that gets traded, so it's held kind of like a money market account. And so we, what we were told by our broker-dealers is, no, if you want to do SEDARS, you have to go directly to a bank and purchase them. And so that's when we kind of went, went the route of looking at, okay, what banks around, have a SEDARS program, and Community Business Bank met that need.
There's, but there's still, yes, I understand that, understood that part, but there are also probably three or four other banks locally that probably could provide them, and we chose this one. So having sort of just some due diligence around that decision-making would be helpful in presenting this back to us, because it does represent a form of capital back to them.
Yes.
Okay, item five, as consideration of proposed midterm adjustments to the city's adopted two-year budget ending June 30th, 2015. Mr. Kristoff?
Hi, Natesh. On the, one of the highlighted areas was preschool childcare fund, increase five regular part-time positions to full-time. Where are we getting the money to pay these people full-time instead of part-time now?
Actually, I think Carol Richardson may be the best one, go ahead and say that.
That'll, that'll come from the fees that are generated from, that are paid by the parents whose children attend there, and there is a typo on that, the total FTE impact is supposed to be 1.25. They're going from 0.75 FTE to 1 FTE. These teachers are right now, because of the staffing ratios that we have and because of the population, they're, they're working beyond their 0.75, so we're having them work extra hours just so we can keep up our staffing ratio, so this actually makes it, makes it official, if you will.
So this is going to be funded by the program itself?
For the program itself, yes.
Okay, thank you. One other question I have, and that is on the regular part-time position for support of the mayor. Is this a city employee?
If I may, it would be a city employee. We would approve this if council approves this item tonight, we would come back on the July 16th council meeting with a job description flushed out on that position.
And who holds the accountability?
That would be within the city manager's office and would be serving the mayor.
Do they, will this person pay union dues?
No. Yeah, they're non-exempt.
No, okay. Retirement and health benefits?
Yes.
They do from the city?
Yes, and we'd have, we'd have that flushed out in that job description.
Actually, I think it's a professional services, no retirement benefits, right.
We're trying to develop a salary and benefit plan that'll stay within the $30,000 that's in the, in the budget here. The find, the. The finer details of what's going to be included and what's not going to be included have, we're still trying to flush that out, but we're going to stay within that $30,000 threshold there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven, it's consideration of contract extension with Bureau Veritas, North America, for Building and Development Engineering Division Services. Mayor Potem Johannison?
Thank you. Randy, just, I mean, I've asked this before on a number of these things, what, we're always looking at contracts like this, what was the local outreach that you did to local companies that can do this kind of work, or did you do any?
This is a six-month extension of the current contract, and I, we did not do any outreach for this extension. It will be with the current consultant. Prior to that, a year ago, when we rehired, we did extensive outreach.
Okay. I think this is, in the six-month period, was the rationale for that?
The rationale is, we are negotiating contract amendments, given changes in HR policy, et cetera. The contract itself comes back to council on a yearly basis to be approved and reviewed. We go on a two-year cycle when we'll go through interviews again, so this six-month period would be half of that yearly extension. We're a year away from going back through the full process and vetting new consultants.
Okay, I think that's probably a good idea, because I know, I think, Marty, you and I attended the permits simplicity back, and I know that issue, Sacramento is really moving on that, too, so we may have some discussion by the time this comes around, and could, you know, affect, depending on how that goes, these contracts and that length of time, so. But thank you.
Item 10, it's consideration of First Amendment to Landmark Apartments Purchase, Sale, and Use Agreement. So, do we, just on this project, do we have a strong belief that this will make the project, these changes will make the project happen?
The developer has reviewed and feels that it'll make it more competitive in their tax credit applications and other funding that they are pursuing as well. We did have, before I forget, a last-minute change that was made after the staff report was delivered. The developer, after reviewing the, their information, is proposing to actually reduce the number of units by just three, not four. So it would be a 61-unit project as opposed to a 60-unit project. But yes, I mean, that is the intent, to make the project more competitive, obviously with the elimination of redevelopment and tax credit being more competitive, other funding sources being in the same boat. The developer is looking for any alternatives out there that will make the project feasible and bridge the gap that still exists.
So if it competes well, will the project then be ready to go? What I'm trying to avoid is just, I mean, it's a lot of effort on your part and a lot of nickel-and-diming of us to constantly try to make projects slightly more feasible, a little bit more feasible, a little, I mean, we either need a project or we don't need a project. So if, you know, this, if it's more, if this, making the project more competitive makes it so that it wins, and you can't control that, but it will be feasible at that stage, right? We won't be coming, because this developer asked you for other things, and you appropriately said, you didn't think the council would be, you know, approving of those. I just, I'll just be sure that they don't come back afterwards and say, well, we were only, that's what we needed in order to be competitive, now we need the following 17 things in order to actually build the project. I don't want to get nickel-and-dimed, so that's what I'm asking, is this, with these changes, if it were to win the tax credit competition, is it actually ready to go? Would it be ready to go and build?
I don't, it'll make the project more competitive for different funding sources, whether it'll bridge the entire gap, we can't guarantee that, whether it would be ready to go. The developer is here, and expand on that question himself.
All right. Great. Ms. Aaron?
Hi, my name is Aaron Mendel, I'm with Metahousing Corporation, thank you for your time. The answer to your question is yes.
Okay, good enough. Thank you. I like you, I don't know where you came from, but I like that kind of answer. All right, we pulled item 12. Item 13, it's consideration of approval of a contract for professional services with Corolla Engineers to update the water master plan, develop a capital improvement program, perform a financial analysis of water rate and impact fees. You know, I think I originally wanted to just pull this off of consent altogether, because I was hoping for more of a, more of a complete report on this, so why don't we do that? So I'm going to pull it off consent, make it a regular agenda item, it's a very, obviously it's a very timely and important issue, and it serves a presentation, so, sorry, we'll come back to this. Item 15, it's consideration of a memorandum of understanding with the cities of Sacramento, Elk Grove, and the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, and Caltrans for the development of a voluntary I-5 subregional impact fee. Mr. Kristof.
Yeah, Mike, what is this? I mean, it's a voluntary impact fee, who's going to volunteer and why?
So, I'm calling the best person.
Sir, Mike on? You really don't want to go down that road.
The comparison in terms of the voluntary nature of it, so, in this case, the voluntary fee allows you to either pay the fee, and then you don't have to do a separate negotiation with Caltrans. If you don't choose, you can choose not to pay the fee and negotiate directly with Caltrans on the mitigation, which may take two, three, four years to do. So that's what it means by voluntary. You can choose to pay the fee, get on with your project, or go negotiate separately with Caltrans on the mitigation for the, whatever's required for that project, its impact on the state highway.
It's a habitat conservation fee for the freeways, essentially.
Yes, yes, that's, yeah. But I was just using that as a comparison for the volunteer.
Is it a habitat conservation document of 2004?
No, it is, it's, that's the only comparison, is the, how it's utilized, whether it's paid or a separate negotiation is done, and sometimes it may be worthwhile for the developer that has a lesser, a lesser impact on the state highway to go ahead and do a traffic study and say, well, my project really isn't going to have that great of an impact on the state highway, and therefore, you know, have a separate mitigation item with Caltrans. So in some cases, there may be a benefit to doing that, in other cases, you know, that project can't afford a two-year negotiation process with Caltrans, they want to pay their fee and move forward.
So this is strictly a voluntary program between Caltrans and the developer?
Yes, it also has 100-trip threshold, too, so projects that are less than 100 trips in either the PM or AM peak hour would not be applicable, they wouldn't have to be subject to this or a traffic study.
So why are we putting in $30,000 for a traffic impact fee from our traffic impact fees to study this?
So, back in 2007, when the council approved participation in this program, it was felt that, that in order to encourage appropriate development in the jurisdictions and to assist in coming up with a regional solution, that the amount which now totals $160,000, or, excuse me, $110,000, was worthwhile, and so each jurisdiction contributed a certain amount at the time for a nexus study, and then this additional $30,000 will be to finish it off, which would include participation in supplemental environmental impact report for the project and staff time.
Thank you. So, Mike, the fee gets collected, and then, does the fee generated in each of the three jurisdictions stay at the jurisdiction, so, and then deployed based on these priorities that have been identified? So, what's the thinking behind that? So if there's a massive amount of development projects and residential projects in Elk Grove, and they contribute a whole bunch of cars in the AM and PM peak hours, that are going, then are going to have an impact in the 550 interchange, for example, and tie up that area, I would imagine that it's most likely that Elk Grove would take the impact fees from that and invest them in the Elk Grove Amtrak Station or Iskama Road, is that, that's Elk Grove, right? So in one of those projects?
Yes.
Is that, but is that really mitigating the impact of what that's likely to induce in terms of the impacts in the central core of the urban area?
Well, this is most likely a partial mitigation, and so, in terms of Caltrans' desire to remove trips off the main line, it satisfies their need to do that, and they're satisfied with this, but it won't, in fact, when we do the environmental impact report, it won't mitigate the full impact of that, so you'll still have other impacts which, to the, say, the 50-I-5 interchange, which Caltrans would then have to be, find other funding sources for.
Yeah.
So it doesn't fully mitigate the impact, it partially mitigates it, but it, Caltrans feels it's of such significance that they're willing to stop challenging projects in order to come up with a pretty good regional effort to come up with a list of 137 to 150 million dollars worth of projects which will actually take trips off the road.
But at different rates?
At different rates, yeah.
In some sense, it's like these different habitat plans, it's like, okay, so Elk Grove's going to invest in a thing for the Swenson Hawk over there, but then the Hawk has to get all the way to Redding, because we're not investing in a place for it here, and so if of these eight, of these eight projects, for example, some of them are going to be more effective per dollar at reducing the number of trips on, in the most congested parts of I-5 than others will be. But we won't be picking, we won't be investing in the, necessarily in the most effective of these first. We might jurisdictionally, but we won't be going to the top of those, saying, where is our dollar best spent in terms of mitigating impacts, and where, which of these projects are actually about, is about to happen, right? So the Elk Grove Amtrak station might be 20 years away, they'll start banking money for it, right, to mitigate that in 20 years, and we might be $5 short on the Broadway Bridge or the streetcar line, so, I get it, I, this is, this is progress from an ease-of-development perspective, I'm not sure from an actual mitigating the impacts perspective, it couldn't be better.
Yes.
Because you'll be separating investments in these eight projects in an uncoordinated way.
And staff, you know, from the various jurisdictions, you know, we attempted to negotiate a much, probably more equitable, but we could not come to agreement, and so the, where it ended up was that each city would, in fact, be responsible for its own fee, and that was what could be agreed upon at this time. It's not, we could change, it is changeable in the future, we can go back and look at a different method, but at this point in time, this is what the five entities could agree upon.
Okay, all right, I get it, there's no friend of the poor commuter trying to get through I-5 like there is for the Swenson Hawk, so it's hard to leverage, because, I mean, ultimately, that's, I mean, we want to make, we want to make it possible for these projects to work, we also do want for the, for our mainline freeways to not be completely, you know, a complete disaster for people trying to navigate them that need them, so. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Item 16 is, because of the story, I'm actually going to pull this one as well, sorry, because I, there's been some media attention about this topic, and I think it deserves, it should, it deserves a presentation, we're going to take it off consent, we'll come back to it in just a bit. Okay, so, with that, we have the consent agenda, with modifications to item four, the investment policy waiver, and with the removal of items 12, 13, and 16, Mayor Potem Johannison has moved it. Second? Second, my Mr. Ledesma, sign no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, hearing none. Actually, before we go to, we'll go to item 13 in just a moment, but, so that'll be our next item, but I neglected under item 1B is, this is the time of year when we are asked by the League of California Cities to designate a council, a voting delegate at the annual league meeting, which we have not done in a few years, because we haven't sent a delegate. I will be there, actually, this year to make a presentation on sustainable development, smart growth, so I don't know if I'll be here for the floor session or not, but I'm probably the most likely, it's in Los Angeles in September, so I'm going to appoint myself as the delegate from the city to it, and, not seeing any other volunteers, so Mr. Kristof's move that we, to approve that, and council member standing second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, so that completes item, oh, yeah, thank you, that completes item 1B. So, item 13, this is consideration of the water master plan, ask for a brief, a brief staff report on that item, please.
Council members, my name's Derek Goodwin, and what I'm here today to present to you is a contract for services for Corolla Engineering to do the water master plan update. The water master plan update is a very comprehensive update, it hasn't been updated since 2005, and Corolla Engineering was the last engineering company that did it, before that was West Coast Engineering, that provided a master, water master plan update. In 2004, the water man, water master plan update basically had an economic boom that projected very profitable and general plan build-out. Unfortunately, that economic boom did not continue. Since then, we've realized that there are several components in the master plan that aren't accurate. One, it was a financial analysis, other was CIP, other was tanks and infrastructure. Tonight's report is trying to rectify and adjust that master plan, as long, as well as incorporate the master plan with the general plan updates. The general plan updates are currently underway through council's direction, and the reason why it's important that the water master plan be coordinated with the general plan updates is because the water infrastructure and the water rates and development and build-out depend on our data that we collect and our water model that we're going to produce. Currently, our water model is out of date and very archaic, so first of all, we want to update our water model, present this information to the general master plan, let the general master plan make decisions, give us alternatives. Based on those alternatives, we'll take the model and present these data back to the general plan, so they can come back to you for adoption or direction. Beyond that, we're gathering our data, we're evaluating our infrastructure, we're assessing our water treatment plants, we're creating a CIP program, we're updating our meter program, we're doing a comprehensive financial analysis, which includes impact fees and rate studies, so that way, the next, since the 2011 rate studies will be coming into effect, out of effect in 2015, we need to be prepared to move forward with new rate studies, and I'll be coming forth with you with workshops and those. In addition to that, the city has several water entitlement contracts, which will be coming due in 2020. In 2020, we'll have to evaluate our water supply and demand based on our general plan updates. The data that's going to be provided in the water master plan will allow us to better evaluate what we will need to negotiate going into these contracts, and the contract negotiations can begin in 2017. That's, in a nutshell, what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay. Any other questions? So, the, first one, ones are technical questions, that's on the hydraulic model. So we would not, we would not be able to use the hydraulic model ourselves, we would have to continue to contract with this same consultant?
Currently, that's, no, not permanently. Currently, we do not have the capability to run our own hydraulic model, so when we update the model, we actually wrote into the contract that we have the ability to be, evaluate. New models are out there with better capabilities, GIS capabilities, present that to us, give us a more dynamic, fluid modeling system, and with that, since we don't have staff to actually run our models, it was prudent And with that, since we don't have staff to actually run our models, it was prudent to allow the, allow the consultant to have that ability until we can actually staff up.
Does that, does that in any way affect our next round, when, when we bid the next one, for example?
No.
Does that in any way give this consultant an advantage over other consultants?
I do not believe so. I believe that based on the models that I've been researching, a consultant with similar capabilities can pick up our data because basically we're providing the data anyways and, and run the model.
All right, so the, the rationales for doing this makes, in addition to that, it's just time, all made sense in terms of the updating the numbers and the general plan update and the preparation for the 2017 negotiations. Just a couple of other items, because the, sometimes we raise issues here when the, when the impact fees come forward that really needed to be raised during the master plan conversations. I just wanted to raise a couple of those. One, obviously, is paying attention to the drought, and you mentioned the changes in both, on both supply side and the contract side and the demand side. But, you know, making sure that our water master plan is evolving in terms of both the, not, not the drought that we're in at the moment, but the, but the long-term, you know, changes forecast for the, for, for water supply in the, in the region and in the state. Second is making sure that we're attentive to our emerging food cluster, and that is an economic strategy, which was not in 2004. And it may be that we had, just, we had even more water intensive uses in our 2004 economic development strategy. I don't remember, but we want, it should, it should align with that strategy to the extent that it can. And then third is, is green infrastructure, because this often comes out, up during the green, during the impact fee discussions as, well, what if we did, what if we, you know, tried different technologies and different approaches, especially green infrastructure that would reduce the cost? And the time to do that is in the master plan analysis, so it would, would ask that we, we be sure that we evaluate trends and new options that are, that are emerging in the water master plan around green infrastructure so that we, we're looking at them at the right, at the right decision point. Mr. Kristof?
Did I hear you correctly when you said that there is a 2015 rates study going to be conducted?
No.
No.
Our, our current rate structure ends in 2015.
Okay.
It was evaluated in 2011, goes through 2015.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Great. All right, any other questions or discussion? Is there a motion, Mr. Kristof?
Yeah, I'd move it.
All right. All right, moved by Mr. Kristof, and seconded by Ms. Sandin.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing on that motion carries. Item 16, this is consideration of support for state legislation relating to ensuring the safe transportation of oil and protection of natural resources, chief. So simply wanted a, a brief report. You give in the press, there were, you know, some stories in the press, both, you know, today about this, just so that there's some, in addition to the specific items in front of us.
Good evening, Mayor Cavolden, Members of Council, Rick Martinez, your Fire Chief. The item you have before you deals with a couple of things. First and foremost, it authorizes the mayor and staff to continue to advocate on behalf of the city for Governor's trailer bill that deals with some funding for the Office of Spill Prevention out of the Department of Fish and Game. That particular segment of the governor's budget would allow for the Office of Spill Prevention to assist in spills which occur. Currently, they're relegated to only spills that occur in marine waters, which is coastal waters. The expansion in the governor's proposal allows them to do inland waterway, which would be important to us. And so that's the first action requested of this. There has been a letter sent on behalf of the city. We were listed in support because of the timing of the budget, timing of the essence. So effectively, what we're asking for is a ratification of the actions of the city to date in, on that item. Secondarily, the staff is requesting that you direct us to continue to coordinate and advocate on behalf of the city of West Sacramento for the safe transportation of oil by rail. As the mayor said, this is, you know, you don't have to look very far in the media in the last several weeks to not see an article on Bakken oil in particular. That came to our attention some time ago. The manager had directed me to, to watch it and participate where we could. I don't need to tell you that rail is big in our city, and I can tell you professionally, while Bakken oil is a concern, there are many concerns on a rail line, and I've been attempting to use this opportunity to shed light on the rail and rail movement throughout our community. But the question of Bakken oil and oil like that, it's, it's volatile. It will, for all intents and purposes, it has been coming through our community, will continue, and the, the volume will increase exponentially. I'm not foolish enough to think that we're going to stop it, but we are looking for an element of safety for our community, and we'll continue to advocate for safer containers, railcars and the like, and for some long-term strategies that provide for, hopefully, the overnight storage of a number of commodities with our community move out of our residential high-density population areas and maybe to a more appropriate location. Also, for the training and equipment of our firefighters and technicians, and last but not least, the ability for us to receive real-time information on what's coming through our community. Having said all that, it is a federal jurisdiction. The state is weighing in on spill prevention, but the fact of the matter is, this is a federal jurisdiction. It's unfortunate that these commodities, if they were loaded on a truck or a, or some other conveyance, we have a great deal of jurisdictional authority where they are in our community, not rail. And so at the end of the day, it's going to be what the United States government does when it comes to the topic of oil by rail and rail safety that I think has the greatest influence, and we hope to continue to weigh in on that, from that perspective. Lastly, SECOG. We've been, we're contracted by SECOG, where I've been participating along with the city manager and committee meetings at SECOG, attempting to develop a regional consensus on the oil by rail question, but also the California Public Utilities Commission, as well as California Energy Commission have asked for participation. It's kind of a brief overview. I'd be happy to attempt to answer your questions.
All right, it's great. It is, I mean, it's an important topic, and I should say, when I was in the governor's office on a different topic a couple of weeks, two weeks ago when this issue came up, and, you know, the, the governor's key team said, we've been in constant communication with your chief. He's been helping to lead this work both regionally and statewide, and that's always good to, good to hear, that, that the work of our department and our chief is, is well respected on this and other issues as well, but this one in particular, so. Mayor Protem Johannason?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. So, I mean, do we have any timing authority at all? You know, because I think, at least the articles I'm reading, it's, really, it's the collision of the trains and the things are, you know, pretty, pretty safe. It's just, you know, but there's also the issues of interaction with other traffic and, and that type of thing. And we've had, we've been able to deal with our local railroad about.
You know, first, we don't have the authority. Where we get to weigh in slightly is on the crossings, and we do have crossings, and we are collectively making hay on that. But this is a large, there's a large economic engine behind these trains, and so we're, we're trying to craft a response to deal with not just the safe containers, but also speed controls, different alerting systems, and those types at our crossings that may make sense. But it's going to be a challenge. We've had some contact from Congresswoman Matsui's office. She's reached out to us. We participated in a conference call with other regional jurisdictions some time ago. I ran into her most recently, and she indicated to me she wanted our city to be and our fire department to be directly involved, so we'll continue, and I think that's what's going to yield us the greatest potential for moving the safety P down the track, so to speak.
Mr. Kristof?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank you for taking quite a lead. I know as soon as we've, as at least I first heard about this stuff a few months ago, you were at the forefront. You were talking about safety and talking about reinforcing of cars, and you were talking about all the issues that there may potentially be out there. Not that there's going to be, but at the same time, you know, there's, there is the possibility, and I'd like to thank you for that. I, I think for me, there are probably a couple of different issues that I'd really like to see stressed, and that is the reinforcement of these railcars. I mean, I think that that is something that is actual, actually doable. How big that economic engine is or anything else should not have any bearing on the safety of those railcars. I don't know if they can develop a railcar that if it tips over, it's not going to split open and, and have a spill, but I think that we could do a better job than what we have now. And so, I mean, I would really like to see somebody like yourself continue to stress that particular issue, and then, of course, it's going to be the speed and, and all of those other issues. And one of the other issues that I do think the rail companies ought to be providing, and that is adequate training. We've never had an oil spill to the degree that some other communities have, and I think it would be incumbent upon us to really stress that a straining, a training regiment, if you will, can be developed to help prevent the spread of oil or help prevent the spread of fire or the safety of our, our guys out there on, out on the street from inhaling whatever it may be, I don't know. But, I mean, I think that those kinds of questions really need to be stressed, and you need to develop a cadre, if you will, of other fire chiefs that, and I know you're doing it, and, but, I mean, they need to really get behind this because those aren't things that I would think the rail people would really put up a big fuss with. I know they will, but at the same time, they shouldn't.
If I may, the issue of railcar safety is interesting. I've learned more about trains in the last 90 days. I, I grew up and lived down the street from a train track the first third of my life, and I thought I knew a little about trains, but I know nothing. But the issue of railcars is interesting in that, what we're, what I found out is that the railcars, when we talk to the rail operators, they speak about their railcars, but they own a very small fraction of the cars, and they're subcontracted, they're owned by a myriad of people, and so I think we need to be very careful of what they say they're going to do with respect to railcar safety in general. But you hit on a very significant point. I believe that railcar safety, the, the tank cars themselves are going to be improved. It's a timing issue right now. I don't think they can build enough of them quick enough to satisfy the need to move the, the oil that they want to move. So there are a number of us that are advocating that, to, to speed up that process. So that's a first important piece. I think the second piece with respect to training, that is, we, we are undertaking an initiative in the West Sacramento Fire Department to do some additional training. We have received some support from the rail industry along with the state, and we'll be sending a few of our people away, but we have modest capacity. So it's really a regional, heavy lift, so to speak, as usually to, we will be hosting here, fire chiefs from Sacramento County, a portion of Placer, particularly Roseville because of the train yard, and Yolo County to develop a consensus along with the emergency, Office of Emergency Services from those three counties here in the next 14 days to develop a regional consensus. And we've had the lead for SECOG and for the first responders, and so we're continuing to advocate that way.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. All right, then, is there a motion on the item?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Ledesma, seconded by Mr. Kristof. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed hearing on that motion carries? So, we're all over the place. We are now moving to item 19, which is consideration, consideration of resolution 14-2 authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a third supplemental indenture, a bond purchase agreement, an escrow agreement, and a continuing disclosure agreement, approving the form of the preliminary official statement and the distribution thereof, and approving other actions related thereto. Mr. Von Berg?
What was that again?
Uh, it's, yeah, I don't know.
Nineteen?
Item nineteen.
Mayor? Yeah, tonight's item, we, we provided to you as an information item back on May 14th, and you, you have the details in the staff report, but, you know, what we're talking about is issuing bonds. What's different about this deal from some of the other deals we've brought to you is that this really started out as the intent just to do a new money issue of bonds to fund the acquisition improvements in the Newport Estates subdivision in Southport, and this would be an issuance of the last authorization under an initial authorization to issue 12 million bonds that was made by the council back in 2001. So we had a capacity to issue 2.7 million in new money remaining. And as the developer, as we have CNO Homes kicking up development, they're, they're selling a lot of lot, lots, they're moving forward with subdivisions, and they will be dedicating improvements to the city, and what we will do is, is these proceeds will be used to acquire those improvements, as was done with the, the previous bond proceeds. What, what, what we also looked at is potential refunding. So there was outstanding bonds from 2004, about 3.8 million, and, you know, as you're well aware, the refunding has been good to us in this market with low interest rates. So we, we looked at that refunding of the 2004 bonds, about 3.8 million, and we saw that the savings would be 5.6% net present value. Again, the, the market moves around, so our intent would be to try to get to the market with this deal in the next couple of weeks to make sure that we can capture what, you know, right now is, is very favorable market to issue these bonds. The other thing that I'd point out to you about this deal is, we wanted, you know, we're aware of the council's direction not to extend debt, refunded debt out beyond the original term. On this one, there was another issue that we wanted to bring to your attention, which was, we wanted to issue this additional debt without seeing an increase in special taxes on the existing property owners in Newport Estates. So there's a unique vehicle in there where a portion of the project funds of the bonds that are issued to the new money will be put into escrow. And CNO Homes currently has a subdivision map that's going for approval, and once that's approved, there's, there's no issue with the special taxes going up and, you know, the developer and then future homeowners would be paying the special tax. But, but we didn't want a situation where if that map wasn't approved, that, the taxes would go up for property owners. So what we've done is, is those, those proceeds would be in escrow until the Unit 10 final subdivision map is approved, at which time then we can tax it, and that way we can avoid impacting, again, the existing property owners. Now, what happens if something were to happen where the, the map were not approved and not move forward? We would take the bonds that were, bond proceeds from escrow, and we would just refund bonds so that, so that, again, the same effect, taxes don't increase.
So, why, why not just wait and issue them then?
Well, the idea of, of moving forward now, again, is because of the, largely the interest rate environment, and we thought that it would, that this vehicle would allow us to move forward now, again, capture those low rates and not, and come up with a way not to impact property owners. It's our understanding the Unit 10 map is very close to approval, so we could, we could certainly get the authorization from you and, and hold off. I mean, as an alternative, the council could consider giving us direction to issue the bonds only after the Unit 10 map is approved. So there, there are different options here, but we thought that the way we structured the escrow would, would achieve that, that goal.
So where are, where are Unit 9 and 10 on the, and maybe, maybe one of your colleagues can help. The, I mean, without going too much into detail, I mean, the developer of this, of this larger project has had, has presented some challenges to the project's ultimate, to the larger project's ultimate completion, and I just, I want to be careful about not getting wrapped up in the drama of that and then spending money to issue bonds and refund them and all of that if, if, you know, if there's, if stuff isn't happening or there's litigation, there's, you know, holdups from litigation and all the, you know, all the other stuff that's been, that's surrounded portions of this project. Where, is, is 9 and 10 different from, I, I actually, I don't know what Unit 9 and Unit 10 are. Maybe the planning, former planning commissioners do, but...
I could try a simple version. So, you know, Unit 9 is approved and homes are being built. So, to date, you have 883 homes in that subdivision. As of May, 561 had been finished and sold. You have 20 units that are under construction, and then you have 53 finished lots that are waiting buyers. So, that leaves 249 unimproved lots. So, of that 249, 59 are in this next Unit 10 subdivision map. So, what it would take is just approval of that map with 59 units to create, you know, the new special tax, basically, to keep the tax rate even for everybody.
Okay. So, the new tax would apply to the unbuilt part of Unit 9 and then to all of Unit 10?
Correct.
And how many units were, would then in Unit 9 would it apply to?
Unit 9, I believe, is 53 lots. And it will go on the tax roll, in fact. It wasn't on the tax roll last year, but as of July 1st, we will put those 53 units on the tax roll. They will be taxed. And then, the 59 units are the ones that are pending.
And then, how many were in Unit 10 again?
Unit 10 is 59.
And when did those go on the tax, when did those go on the tax rolls?
Right now, what we'd anticipate is that they would go on the tax roll that would be as of 15, 16. And so, that basically would be a year from now would be the deadline to have that map approved to make that, that next tax roll of 15, 16.
Mr. Kristof. On that issue there, I know that in an industrial and commercial realm, we've made some adjustments to say something to the effect that when it is, when the lots are completed, lots are built on or sold, and there is an occupant, is when it starts. That's not the case that I hear here.
Yeah. Here, we would, we would put, when the final map is approved, it would be, we'd be able to put it on the tax roll. Basically, before the home is built, you can do that.
No, I understand. I guess I'm just sort of wrestling with, there may be a way to help the development community along by changing that philosophical approach. But it's something, I mean, I'd like to have the whole council really sort of weigh in on and take a look at it. Maybe, there may not be any advantage for us, but at the same time, I, for some reason or another, I just get the feeling that there's going to be an economic boom and that housing is really going to lead the way. And if this could be a way in order to extrapolate some other kinds of things or to help the development community or to take a, say, an economic advantage, that might be something I would at least explore. So, anyway, I just throw that out.
Any further questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll move it. The item.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Kristof and second by Mayor Protem Johannison. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, turning down, that motion carries. Thank you. Item 20 is consideration of first reading of ordinance 14-8, amending chapter 15.11, electric and barbed wire fences of the City of West Sacramento Municipal Code. Mr. Goodwin.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. This is a public hearing and first reading to review an amendment to ordinance 14-8, electric fences of the City of West Sacramento Municipal Code. During the original public hearing for ordinance 13-10, electric fences, an electric fence vendor voiced concerns. Council directed staff to discuss those concerns with the vendor. These amendments contained in ordinance 14-8 address those concerns. The proposed amendments adopt the following provisions. The installation of an electric fence requires an approved permit with building, with the building official and fire code official. Applications must include, among the following, elimination of the requirement of a notarized statement from a neutral third party, elimination of the requirement of the perimeter fence to be separated from the electric fence by not less than 24 inches. This separation is now defined by an industry standard that's approximately four inches. Modifications to make the ordinance consistent with planning requirements and elimination of the requirement of gate markings and specific hours of activation. This addresses non-standard operation schedules and redundant identification signage. Thank you. Are there any questions?
I'm Mr. Protem Johannison.
Yeah, just on the permit itself, you said there's a building and a fire permit. Is it a single application?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
On the, on item five, the elimination of the requirements for gate markings, since Knox boxes provide signage identifying gates, is that, what if they don't do that anymore from another providers in the market? I mean, the practice of a single vendor seems like not necessarily sufficient justification not to have a protective requirement if, you know, if we believe that that's, that there be some, some standard in this, in this field. Was that the only reason, was that the current, that one vendor accomplishes the same goal in a different way?
It does accomplish the same goal in a different way. The elimination, the inclusion of the gate markers was something that was not industry standard. It was local and specific, and we could certainly replace that. That's not a significant issue.
But is there, so they're achieving the same objective in a different way?
They are.
Is the objective itself articulated somewhere in the, in the requirements? I mean, if they, if, so if, I mean, is, they are doing that, this vendor is doing that, but if another vendor enters the market or if they change their practices, we wouldn't be achieving that objective any longer? Or if they, if they stop providing signage identifying gates or if somebody else entered the markets that we're going to do just everything Knox boxes does except we're not going to provide that signage?
We won't provide the specific reflectors signage on the gate, but there is significant signage within the, required within the ordinance that every vendor, no matter who they are, they'll have to go through the ordinance procedures. And there is significant signage.
Okay. All right. This has been public hearing. Is there any further discussion, right, motion?
The item.
Mr. Kristof, second by Ms. Andine. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, turning down, that motion carries. Item 21 is consideration of support for state legislation relating to truck weight fees.
Good evening, Mayor Baldwin and members of the council. I have a brief presentation in support of the staff's recommendation, so... All right. Currently, the city has about 406 lane miles of pavements in its inventory. Of that, about half of that, 203 lane miles are classified as local streets, functionally classified as local streets. It's important to note that because those streets are generally not eligible to compete for any state or federal grants. You can compete for pedestrian, bike, ped, or safety type of grants, but you cannot compete for pavement grants for local streets. So, it's important to note that. Also, the health of pavement is measured in terms of PCI, the payment condition index, zero being the worst pavement and 100 being the excellent pavement. Currently, in front of you, you see a map of the streets in the city, all color-coded, red being failed roads and the green one being good and, good or excellent condition. Back in 2005, the average PCI for the city streets was 84. However, when we did the study again in 2012, the average had dropped to 74. So, that was a 10-point drop over a seven-year period. This is during the period when we were investing about, on an average, about $2.8 million of Measure K capital funds on our streets. And in spite of that, it declined by 10 points over a seven-year period. Also, I want to point out that PCI of 74 itself is not a bad thing. It will actually fall in a green zone. However, the number is, the average doesn't mean too much because in some portions of the city, you have very good pavements, and in some portions of the city, you have failed pavements. On an average, it's 74. So, you cannot ignore the fact that our failed or poor pavements in our street, in our city. For example, there are a couple of examples in front of you. The 17th Street, the PCI is two, and in Sutter Street, the PCI is 14. In general, for the, for example, the Memorial Park neighborhood, the average PCI in that neighborhood is 28.1. Overall, there's 12% of our pavements that are either failed or in poor condition. The chart in front of you shows how exponentially the cost of maintenance goes up if we do not take care of the pavements in a timely fashion. For example, when the pavement has spent its 40% of its life, we can go there and do a relatively inexpensive slurry seal or a cape seal for $2.50 a square yard. But if you wait until the pavement spends 90% of its life, then it costs about $86 a square yard to fix that, the pavement. So, it's about 35 times more. So, a prudent pavement management would be to make sure that the good pavements remain good at the 40% of its life. We go in and take care of the preventive maintenance. And also, while doing that, do some of the reconstructions and rehabilitations to take care of some of the failed or poor pavements. Unfortunately, the road funds available for maintenance has been flat, as you can see the blue line on the, on the chart. So, it's barely enough to do the crack seals, to fill the potholes, and striping and street sweeping, and that kind of stuff. We are not able to move that fund to capital projects. The Measure K capital, like I mentioned, used to provide, on an average, about $2.8 million a year over a 10-year period, but then that ended when the Measure V replaced the Measure K capital. Staff understands it is, it is almost impossible to find a single source of funding to backfill that gap. However, we might be able to look at many possible sources and cobble up money together to come up with the, to backfill the gap. Council has already directed the staff to look at some possible scenarios for either reducing or eliminating some of the water subsidy under certain scenarios and maybe possibly redirecting those funds to road funds. That could help. And also, council is also considering to set aside a portion of Measure K growth, the growth of Measure K, a portion of that towards road funds. That would also help. Staff is also, currently, the storm drains and the pumps related to storm drains, they're all operated using road funds. Staff is looking into the options whether those expenditures could be borne by some other funding sources other than the road funds to relieve some of the road fund needs. In some cases, CFDs could be appropriate solution. But in spite of all that, whatever the city can do, we need help from the state to bring in additional funding to take care of some of these roads. That brings us to these two legislations, SB 1418 and AB 2728. Basically, about a billion dollars of funding is generated by the truck weight fees. And according to the gas tax swap that took place in 2012, this billion dollar is directed towards payment of general obligation bond debt services, which should have been paid by the state's general fund. So, back then, this was done to take care of some of the deficit in the state's general fund, fund. However, now that the state's general fund is doing much better than what it was in 2012, maybe this is the time to bring back the transportation dollars back to transportation projects. So, that's where these two bills come in. Although these two bills have different wording, but in effect, what it does is it brings 44% of that billion dollar, which is $440 million, to the cities and counties. And through the formula, it's distributed to the cities and counties, and our share is expected to be about $350,000. So, but the status of these bill, these bills are currently under submission. What that means is it's not moving forward at this point. However, a letter of support from entities like us, cities like us, could eventually help these bills to move forward. Either these bills or any bill that, that in effect does the same thing, brings additional money to the city's transportation needs from the truck weight fees. So, that concludes my report. Staff recommends that this council approve the mayor and the city manager to write letters of support for these two bills or any other bill that would accomplish, in effect, the same thing.
Questions or discussion? Mayor Protem Johannison?
Yeah, so this, we're not really talking about any increase in fees here. It's more just making sure the fees are going to not divert it.
Correct. Currently, the fees are going towards payment of general obligation bond debt service. These bills are proposing that funds should be distributed for transportation purposes. Of that, $440 million will go towards cities and counties.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Kristof.
No, I, I think that if we're going to be successful in the political arena with this kind of a thing, somehow or another, we need to change our anagram to CTA.
California Transit Association?
Yeah, there we go.
Mr. Ledesma.
Just real quickly, so as part of our normal state legislative affairs, lobbyists, I mean, we're actively working on this now, or at least have voiced our opinion on this now, or...
We haven't expressed our opinion on this yet. Currently, these two bills are, like I said, it is under submission, so it is not really active.
Okay.
But our letters would, could help make these bills become active in the future.
And I'm only asking because it's just, it's just, we have a state senator representation that's still lead in the senate, and that's where the main bill for SB 1418 is, correct? So, I mean, is there, have we, have, I'm not sure if the mayor's had any contact with, with him on this issue, just to kind of get grease to wheels or...
If I may, we have not. That's why we're seeking the authority to do that tonight. We did monitor this effort. It was a, the outline of the two bills, there was a proposal in the state budget to do that, and it was, so we were following that on the basis that we'd like to come back to the council with a comprehensive approach to roads, using different sources of money, as Denix mentioned, in terms of cobbling funds together. So, we did monitor that, but we did not actively participate in the advocacy of either one of these bills. But we have been monitoring it. It does make sense. Just to follow up on that, although this notion was not executed in the recent state budget, there is some discussion, particularly by the transportation lobby, that additional fund needs to go to streets and roads. This may come back as, as soon as the end of session, maybe there's a last-minute deal before they adjourn, but no, no later than spring of next year, this, this issue is going to be front and center.
Yeah, I don't have an issue whatsoever about strategy around funding, or I mean, it's actually, I'm applauding the effort, so if I haven't said that already, I apologize. But, and I'm glad we're monitoring it. I'm just trying to, the ask here is to authorize the mayor and the city manager to execute letters and the support of this. And so, whatever we need to do on the legislative side, I'm supportive of, it's just a matter of, I'm just wondering what we've done to date with this.
Ms. Andine?
I want to thank you. I think you've made a very persuasive case for us to have this in our sights and to be concerned about this in the... be concerned about this in the long run. So I, I think moving this way, but then considering other options as well, as many options as we can, to, to get ahead of this in essence, so thank you.
Right. There are a couple of other things that we are monitoring. The cap and trade funding that, in that agreement, we understand that about ten percent of that funding, the total funding is about eight hundred and seventy-two million dollars. Ten percent of that is supposed to go towards SCS type of activities. So we believe some of that would come towards the road funding, but we don't know how much that is. And also, there is a forty percent set aside for important projects on carbon reduction projects. So we don't know what exactly that means, but we are monitoring that. In addition to that, in the budget proposal, there is a $242 million advance payback of the HUTA, HUTA funds that the, the state borrowed from the cities and counties back in two thousand and ten or twelve, somewhere in there. So that money's coming back, so we are monitoring that. So there are some funds coming in. So like I said, we would try to cobble up everything together.
Yeah, I, my sense is the cap and trade money is not going to be really eligible for this purpose. When I was, when I got harangued about the, the fire chief, that's, that's what I was there for, and was to try to lobby for a larger share of the cap and trade funds to go to the regional sustainable community strategies, and for those funds to go to the regions, because there's a lot of pressure inside the administration to spend, to have the cabinet secretaries essentially allocate into state-level programs, which mean we would never see them on the ground. And if they do that, it will be mostly for affordable housing and transit, or maybe exclusively for affordable housing and transit. So whatever it is, we'll have performance metrics around carbon reductions anyway. So this, it would be a long shot that we would be able to use those sources, but continue to pay attention for all of those opportunities makes a lot of sense. Just as a technical matter, I mean, the, I think the, the, by custom practice of the city, I execute the, the letters to, on legislation to the governor and the legislators. We should fix, just correct that, we don't, we don't send two, two letters, one for me and one for the city manager on the same topic. So we should probably correct that when we do that. Could you go back to the, the very first slide with the, the map of the city and the streets? I actually wanted to ask you about that. So while it's coming up, the, the state streets neighborhood, and, and to some extent, the bright neighborhood, but the state streets one really jumped out, because when we did the Measure K, what you called the Memorial Park neighborhood, sorry. The, the, when we did measure, the Measure K road rehabilitation improvements, we, I, I think we did, I thought we did the state streets neighborhood.
The Memorial Park neighborhood, it was supposed to be the next project, but we ran out of Measure K before we got to it, so.
Ah, okay, gotcha, and?
So if we had more Measure K, that would have been the next project.
And then is that, does, is, was the next one after that, the Maple Holly Chaparral area, the west, essentially the, the Westfield area?
Westfield, we are already working on it, Westfield area.
We're working on that now?
We're on phase one and phase two, we are doing that.
All right. And is, is Fifth Street in, through the Bridge District, is it really in that bad of a shape?
That's the one I, I.
That seems pretty, pretty good for, for failed.
Well, some of, some of these streets may look green on the map, but it may have extended their five-year or six-year life, so that may be in the verge of going into yellow or, fair or poor condition. So that is the time we, we should normally go in there and do some slurry sealing or cape sealing, so that we can maintain it at that level.
If I may, Mayor Vinck with Public Works Engineering. I'd like to elaborate a little bit on the map. Westfield Phase One and Phase Two, Phase One, construction is completed. Phase Two would include Maple, Pecan, and those particular streets, and we're working diligently, try to get those out late this summer. State Streets, Memorial Park, we did the portion north of Fifteenth Street, but unfortunately, we ran out of funds for a portion between Fifteenth and Stone. And Fifth Street itself, we did leave that, when we were going, using Measure K and accelerated Measure K funds, Fifth Street was excluded due to some issues with, how should I put it, environmentally sensitive materials that were discovered with the underground utility projects. So we didn't slurry seal, we didn't, you know, maintain, we couldn't treat Fifth Street. So that's why it's red.
Okay. No, I meant, my question was actually the opposite. It doesn't seem to be in that bad of a, of a, of shape, at least in that stretch, but.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Kristoff?
You showed a picture of Sutter Street. Now, Sutter Street is really the street that needs a tremendous amount of work.
Yes.
And there comes a time when, I mean, we realize that we need to do something. We need to grind the street, or we need to level it out if we can, and take those same materials and put it back, and then but, maybe put a slurry over it, or we need to do something, and I don't know what that is. But the problem is, is there's so few people that live on it, and so few businesses that are on that street, that it is, the economy of scale, it's difficult. But at the same time, we know we need to do something. Is there something that we can do that sort of sticks our toe under the tent so that we can at least make forth an effort so that we know we're coming back at a later time and, and give some of the people over there a little bit of a confidence booster?
Right. So on that street, the proper solution would be to dig the existing street because it's structurally failed, so we have to dig out the whole thing, and then come up with the sub-base and base and the whole, whole structural section, we have to do it again. Just to do it, the, the pavement, the way it is right now, to put it back in, in place, it would cost about four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars just to do it. But we need to note that the pavement width is substandard in many, many places, so we need to widen the street. And then we also need to address the drainage issues in that area.
Oh, that's true.
So that would put us, the project, in the, in the order of a million or plus, in that range. So if I have a million dollar, I would go and do an entire neighborhood of rehabbing rather than that, doing that one street. So that's the issue. But however, we can talk to some of the owners there on that street and see if there is any way we can cobble up some money, and if they are willing to contribute anything towards that solution. But otherwise, coming up with a million dollar just to fix that one block of road, but we have to do something. We cannot ignore that.
I think it would help to at least talk to the neighborhood so that you've acknowledged that we know you need some work here, but we really don't have the funds for the proper fix. And I, I don't know where that's going to go, but at least it's something.
Well, we'll talk to those, the, the people in the neighborhood, and we'll see where.
Yeah. Well, one of the directions I thought you were looking for in this agenda item was the Measure J and K, three dollars, water bill, reimbursement, this and that sort of thing. I think I would use two thousand and fourteen as the cutoff, just because I don't know if it's fair to reduce somebody's water bill and then not somebody else's. But I think that if you do start at two thousand and fourteen, it's not that they'll ever know they had it to start with. It's not like people go out and, and compare their, their bills, especially the sewer and water bill and that sort of thing. But, and I realize the downfall of all of that is you don't generate any money to start with. So I realize that's a difficult one, but at the same time, I think if you started two thousand and twelve, you know, you have people like Marty that moved here after that, he would have it taken away, and, you know, and, and then all of a sudden, you have some problems, so, or some issues are at least raised. But I do think that if you start at two thousand and fourteen, we've got a few subdivisions that, they're out there on the horizon, and so, you know, you can generate that three dollars, not for Measure J and K, but off of their own bill.
At the last council meeting, council gave direction for the staff to look at two or three possible scenarios.
All right, yeah.
And Director Phil Wright is working on that, and I'm sure he will bring those options to you.
Okay, okay.
Seems to me that for Sutter, if we had a million dollars, please send in the state streets or somewhere else first. I mean, the, the long range, I mean, the real solution to Sutter is going to be the, the development of the large parcel at Sutter and First, for which the only access is Sutter. And that's not a next-year thing, most likely. But that's, that's really, that's really the, the only opportunity, it seems to me, that there's ever going to be. It's that, that a, a development project at that location would have to contribute substantially to making Sutter Street operational again. But in the absence of that, until that occurs, it seems like we're stuck in that, in the catch-22 that you've outlined.
But I have talked to Spurgeon, Spurgeon lives on the street, and I have talked to him, and, I mean, I think they real, he realizes that it'd be difficult to, from a financial perspective, to justify that. But at the same time, I think if they could patch a couple potholes of the bad ones or something like that, it would go a long way towards building up the rapport and waiting for the time before that large parcel can finally be either sold, developed, or whatever.
Mayor, members of council, we've talked about this issue a lot the last few weeks. Now that the dust has settled on the state budget, Denix did mention the, the HUTA repayment allows a small portion, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, to come back to the city for streets and roads, a very small amount. But we'd like to continue to look at this and the notion of cobbling some maybe one-time funds or some portion of Measure K. We'd like to come back in the near future, back to the council with some options to, particularly the residential neighborhoods, to get those, those streets from red back to, back to green.
Okay, so you just want us to act on the truck fees, right? All right. Any further discussion? All right, so is there motion on the agenda with that slight modification? Is that moved? Moved by Mr. Ledesma?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kristoff. All of those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing done. The motion carries. Thank you. Item twenty-two, is consideration of presentation and discussion of ordinance fourteen-six, repealing and adding chapter thirteen point oh-four, Article Nine of the City of West Sacramento Municipal Code relating to water conservation.
Good evening, mayor and council members. The purpose of tonight's item is to discuss and receive feedback from council on the proposed changes to our Water Conservation Municipal Code. The code was first adopted in nineteen eighty-seven and has not been updated since then, and requires updating to incorporate state law such as Senate Bill Seven that requires a twenty percent reduction by the year 2020, and the Urban Water Management Planning Act, which requires, among other things, that the city establish prohibitions against specific wasteful practices such as gutter flooding. Just want to touch on some of the major changes proposed. The first is addition of the Purpose and Intend section of the code to demonstrate recognition and compliance with those state regulations related to water use. We have an expanded definition of water waste, where we've included a lot of different types of water waste that could occur. We've also removed references to the water conservation fixtures, since that's already covered under Building Code, and it was duplicative. And we've added the enforcement mechanism against water waste. And I'd like to take a minute just to talk about that section in particular, and just make it clear that although state law does require we have the capability to enforce in that manner, it's not the primary method of obtaining compliance and reaching our conservation goals. We have the practice of providing outreach and education as our major way of achieving these goals, and we can, will continue to do so. And it's evidenced in our history of programs using such mechanisms, such as our recycling programs. We have a commercial recycling program that has reached great gains in participation just from specific focused outreach efforts and all voluntary compliance. And lastly, I just wanted to mention that the penalties will be used as a last resort for gross violations of, for people or customers that aren't complying with voluntary requests. And those penalties are just referenced in the municipal code update as being adopted in the City Book of Fees, which will be brought to council later this year. But I'd welcome any input this evening on how you would see the structure for that, those penalties. And lastly, I just wanted to mention, it's important to note that the city has been successful in reducing our water consumption since the governor's declaration of drought in January. So far, community-wide, we have reduced water by twenty percent through the period of February through May this year as opposed to last year, and our city facilities and parks and infrastructure has reduced by twenty-six percent for the same time period. So that's the basics of my presentation. I'd happy to take any comments or questions.
Are there any questions at this time? Mr. Mayor Partum Joannison?
Thank you. Just going to the ordinance itself, on the rehabilitated landscape, which is basically, you know, someone redoing something that requires a permit, it says that the, the definition is the modified landscape area equally greater than two thousand square feet is fifty percent of the total landscape area. Is that more than or less than fifty percent?
I'm sorry, I have to look at that.
I think it just is exactly fifty percent, so you probably just.
Yeah, I took, that definition comes out of our irrigation efficiency code.
Probably going to be more than fifty percent, I would imagine, is what you should be saying.
Yeah, I'd have to look into that. Like I said, that came directly from that code. And since I mentioned the rehabilitated landscapes in my code, I wanted to include that definition there as well, so I'm not really sure on the answer to that question.
Okay. And I guess the only other questions deal with the enforcement. I see what's happening with the, you know, for example, someone waters their car without an automatic shut-off, it's subject to, you know, eventually some type of penalty. So I, I, I think I agree with, with, you know, your strategy, going after notices and, and more public education about the issue of, of water conservation, because I, I'm just looking at kind of an enforcement issue, how are we going to enforce this? You know, how much resource are we going to put into that? You know, is it going to be one or two times by the time that, you know, the season's over? So you want to try to stop people from doing it to begin with, and not necessarily rely on just these, these penalties. And we haven't really seen what the dollar amount is. Like you said, it's, it come back in the book of fees, but that's, that's where I'd prefer to see, you know, or in construction uses, some type of incentive process. And the construction uses, it says that the use of recycled waters encouraged were available, and, you know, maybe there's some way that we could look at some kind of incentive to do that, you know, making more than just an encouragement and an ordinance, you know, something a little more affirmative than that. But those are the main comments I had on this.
All right, any other questions at this point? All right, we do have a couple requests for public comment on item twenty-two. The first is by John Woodling from the Regional Water Authority.
Thank you, Mayor Cabal. Good evening, council members. I'm John Woodling. I'm Executive Director of the Regional Water Authority, and I, and I want to commend the efforts of the staff to work on updating this code. I think it makes it consistent with current practice and, and current law. I think it does make it enforceable, which, which I think is, is a part of the tools. Certainly, education and encouragement and support is the, the goal of the rest of the region in addition to the city, but that enforcement tool is important to, to get action. I, I want to especially commend the staff for working with RWA staff to, to try and bring this code as much as possible into consistency with, with the rest of the region. Each jurisdiction has unique circumstances, but the more we can be consistent, the better we can do that education process on a regional basis, which, which really is more effective and I think more efficient. And it shows in the, in the accomplishments. So I want to, I want to commend the staff and the residents and businesses of West SAC for, for twenty percent water use reduction over the course of this year, and that's happened throughout the region, and it's a lot better than most of the rest of the state has been doing. One other item I want to comment on, staff refers to the metering progress, which is also going to be important in, in water conservation in the long term. So I want to take the opportunity to draw your attention, thank and congratulate the city in being one of three partners on a grant we just received from Bureau of Reclamation for three hundred thousand dollars, a third of which will be to West Sacramento for the meter retrofit program. That follows on a two thousand and twelve grant we got. I, I think the city's share was a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, you know, reclamation recognizes that us getting metered is going to help reduce water. water use. So thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions if you have any.
John, if I can ask you, so we're at 20%. I read in the Chronicle that Bay Area is like at 2%.
Yeah, and the.
How are they going to, if they're at 2% in this, in these conditions, how will they meet the SB 7X or whatever the number was?
Well, you know, here's the, here's the, here's the dirty little secret of SB X77. It's called 20% by 2020, but in a lot of areas, they get a sort of a get out of jail free card. And a lot of Southern California, a lot of, especially the peninsula and parts of the Bay Area, their water use is naturally lower, in part because they've been aggressive on conservation, in part because they have smaller lots and a cooler climate. So, you know, our region is one of the few regions of the state that actually made the commitment to a full 20% in the legislation. San Francisco, where the water use is below 100 gallons per capita per day, they essentially got a free pass.
Thanks. All right, Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell of West Sacramento, for the record. And it seemed like we wouldn't have as much trouble as we seem to be having since we have the sandy soil over here, which is more porous than that hardpanned stuff we see elsewhere. But among those suggestions I would make is, I don't think everybody's aware that we can save money when we go to take a shower. We don't just turn it on full blast and we could have the lower floor shower heads. And myself, I get myself nice and wet and then I bathe the upper part of my body and rinse it off.
Where's this going, Mr.?
But all that time, I don't have it turned on full blast all that time. And one and two, we have a lot of trees planted right next to the curb. And for a while, I had a sprinkler system aimed away from the curb. But unfortunately, my neighbors, the way they park their cars, why oftentimes they would come up off the curb onto my grass and they were tearing up the sprinklers. So I had to relocate those. So, and I'm on one of those streets that doesn't have storm drains. So I was wondering, maybe we could consider drilling some smaller holes down there where the rain is most, rain or other water is most likely to collect. And so that it could drain as part of the irrigation to the trees that are planted closest to the curb. So I think, I think we ought to consider that. But like I say, we need to emphasize the importance of taking shorter, non-constant showers, if you will, so we could, we could save money there too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. Is Carolyn Ruben still here? No, she's left. All right. So that concludes the public comment on that item. More council questions or discussion? Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you, Mayor Cabaldon. I want to thank staff for the work on this. When I first read it, I have to, I have to tell you, it seemed to me very, there were some harsh pieces about the compliance piece, but I realized that that's necessary to actually, in some cases, get compliance. I'm supportive of that. I also had questions, but Mr. Woodling was helpful about other municipalities and how we kind of stood up next to those. So that was helpful to hear his comments about that this is a great step forward for us and some of the successes. The only, I think, caution or the thoughts I have about this when this is enacted is that as a city, we will have to stand up very carefully for all of our city-owned properties to make sure that we're a role model. And I know that'll happen because I know that we're very careful. But I think if we, if we put this into action, we also have to take a very careful look at how, what we're doing and watering of properties. I know we're doing that already, but I just think we'll be under a light.
Definitely.
So thank you for the work. Thank you.
Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. Just real briefly, I wanted to just echo councilmember Sandin's comments. And Paulina, thank you for stepping into this, to this venue and kind of being our water person. And we've gotten, council has received, at least I have received many requests over the last six months that the drought was officially declared by the governor with ideas or issues or concerns. And I know through the city manager, you've become sort of the point person on some of these issues. So I just want to personally thank you, and I'm supportive of these, echoing what councilmember Sandin says. We will have to live by these and I will ensure my sprinklers are adjusted. They already are, actually, at home. But making sure that I'm not the first to run afoul of it. But it is, that's the purpose of it, is to make sure we're all accountable to each other for conservation. And we've done a great job as a community, and this is just pointing out that we can always do better. So I appreciate the work on this, I really do. And as much as we can do in further educating the community on how to be proactive, I know the master gardeners who are out here every week at the farmer's market are working, I think they're working on a project to convert to drought tolerant landscapes and working with folks. They have wonderful ideas. So as much as we can through our communications is, continue to get that, get that message out there and beat that drum would certainly shore up our conservation efforts and maybe the harshness of this language in here. But I support it 100%. So thank you.
I want to mention that we do have a workshop this Saturday, a gray water workshop on Saturday at the Community Center, 9 to 11. So that's one of the things that we're starting to do is to organize and offer some workshops. We're hoping to have some additional workshops in the fall and next spring with information about the right plant, right place, drought tolerant plantings, how to use your irrigation system, and things like that, so we can continue to engage the public and give them the tools so that they can meet the conservation goals.
So I have a couple of technical questions. So, well, one's not really a question, but so the, for 15 years, I've been trying to cleanse our municipal code of references to department directors because, for two reasons. One is, we've changed the organization of the city's management structure a few times in the history of the city, and we haven't always had a director of public works. And so referencing, giving the director of public, the works, the authority essentially to create a crime in the code if that person does not exist is just, it's confusing. And so, and then, but the second and more important one is, we hold the city manager accountable. And so the law should reference, in those cases, the city manager and not the director of public works. There's a provision of 13.0.6760 that references the director of public works, and it should be the city manager and/or his designee as it indicates there. The second is, so just a structural one, and Mr. Juana is, and is the attorney here, not me, but the way this is constructed is the definition of water waste, it implies that at some point that's going to be, those things will be prohibited. And in fact, the title of 13.4.770 is water waste prohibited. But the actual, the actual language of that section is that no one shall cause or permit any water furnished to this person's, to the person's premises by the city to run to waste, which is a different, run to waste has a specific meaning with respect to that the earth has been saturated with water to the point that excess water flows over to the earth to waste.
Okay.
That's, that is, that is, that's the most severe definition. But, so if you have, if you're operating water fixtures or heating cooling devices so that they leak or discharge excessively, but they are not saturating any earth in such a way that qualifies as run to waste, it doesn't seem to me that they're actually prohibited under this. I mean, I think that's your intent.
Right.
But the way that this is, the way that this is framed, because the, you have specific practices that are prohibited with respect to swimming pools and outdoor use and some other things. But in this provision itself, there's actually no ban on water waste that where there is not, where it does not meet the definition of run to waste, which is in the provision, the second sentence of provision one of the wasted water definition. So, I mean, this is workshop only, so I'm not, it's not a big deal, but just asking you to take another look at that and make sure that we're actually accomplishing what we want to in that regard. I mean, I continue to be, I share the concerns about the violations, although I think if we read any of our codes, it will look that way with respect to code enforcement and everything else. And so we do, as Ms. Sandin said, we need the tools where there are folks who are just, just don't listen and don't pay attention and aren't willing to move to have the appropriate tools in order for enforcement to ultimately occur. And frankly, given all the education that's been occurring in our city and regionally and statewide, there are fewer reasons not to be avoiding this sort of, you know, excessively wasteful activity as well. So I think as we implement it, we'll implement it in a humane way, but we definitely need the tools to be able to stop the most egregious of the violations. Are any other comments? All right, then this is for presentation discussion only, so I'll be returning to council at a future date for first reading. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us then to item 22.5, which is consideration of Resolution 14-40, calling an election and requesting the Board of Supervisors to permit the county clerk to render specified services to the city relating to the conduct of a municipal election on November 4, 2014. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for your earlier action regarding this item. The purpose of this report is to request the county to provide consolidated election services for the upcoming November general election. This is an administrative action that must be taken by resolution. And as I mentioned earlier, the Yolo County Board of Supervisors has requested that we have this resolution to them no later than July 7. No changes are proposed to candidate statement word counts, nor have the fees for printing been modified. And I anticipate, again, working closely with Yolo election staff to hopefully improve upon the time that it takes to receive West Sacramento results from the polls. I can see.
Questions for the clerk? All right. Then is there a motion on this item? All right. So Mayor Partem Joannison moves, and Ms. Sandin seconds the item. So all of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing done. That motion carries. Council calendar, Madam Richardson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. You may have noticed when you walked in this evening that the district attorney was holding a informational meeting on the neighborhood court that is being proposed. There was about 15 people there. They're going to be having another informational session on July 16. So if, we'll be getting some more information out again tomorrow night. I just wanted to remind the council at 5:30, there's going to be an I Street Bridge open house at the Stanford Gallery in Old Sacramento, as well as the farmer's market tomorrow night will have its first beer garden of the season. Then on the 26th, the dig-in dinner is going to take place with the Broderick Restaurant and our own Chris Ledesma. And that's, the dinner's actually going to take place at 6 o'clock, not 4 o'clock. That's a typo. And finally, that on your calendar is on Sunday, June 29, the San Pedro Association is going to be having a festival and parade. And some of our fire personnel are going to be participating in that. And just want to bring, and that starts at 10 o'clock in the morning.
I believe the queen of the festival is also.
Well, there will be a queen from, yes, my daughter is one of the queens coming from visiting this one, yes.
Okay.
She's the regional queen. She represents all six counties, be gracing our community with her presence.
Something like that, yeah.
All right. Any questions on the calendar?
I do.
Mr. Kristoff.
Carol, could you check out the 25th and maybe the 9th as far as SAC Regional having a meeting? Because I'm under the impression we're dark, we have a summer break or a summer recess, so to speak.
Okay, well, June 25th and July 9th?
And July 9th. And then get back to me. Thank you.
City Manager Report.
Good evening. Just briefly, the Fix 50 Project is concluded today. The road work on both the eastbound and westbound directions on that portion of Highway 50 is completed, and Denix is still here, the fire chief's here, the police chief's not here. But I do want to give credit to those three departments for really being ready. Denix is spearheading the effort to get us reimbursed for our portions of our costs, and we'll see that take place here real briefly. Also, the state budget was mentioned a couple times tonight. We're still analyzing the impact, particularly as it would assist preschool and the early learning program, the issue of local streets. We do think we have a pretty good handle on the positive impact of that. And then this issue that the mayor mentioned in terms of cap and trade and how it would impact our ability to compete for sustainable community grant funding. So we'll come back with you as we get a better handle on those opportunities. But I think for this year, I think we can take a deep breath and say, and be very grateful for a positive state budget.
Any questions on the City Manager Report? City Attorney Reports? Staff Direction for members of the council? We have no future agenda item request, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Mr. Ledesma. Seconded by Mr. Kristoff. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing done. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.[1776.13][1776.13]